This meeting in order. This is the special call meeting for Thursday, May twenty second, two thousand and twenty five. All right, indication and pledge.
Okay. Heavenly Father, we come once again to thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. And we ask you, God, that as we enter into this meeting tonight, that you will be with us, that you will lead us and guide us in all of our decisions. We pray, oh, God, that you will bless our city, our state, and our nation. And we'll be careful, God, to give you all the glory, the honor, and the praise in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, being visible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At, we need to take this opportunity, I need to take this opportunity to go over the meeting procedures. And the meeting, the planning staff presents the application to request through the planning commission during the staff's report. The report evaluates how the proposal conforms to Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations, and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their requests to the planning commission. It is the responsibility of applicants to make presentations on request and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. The public hearing portion, public comments on public hearing items will be limited to thirty minutes for each side, each opposing side, with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to represent your group's position at the allotted time. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker, if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. All right, we definitely have a quorum. So, uh, Ms. Leaf, do we have any planning commission business, new business?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll get right to it. Item one point one, S P dash twenty-five dash ten dash four forty Martin Palmer Drive Site Plan. Consider the site plan approval for an approximately three thousand square foot accessory building to an existing commercial business. Property is located at four forty Martin Palmer Drive, parcel zero three dash one two six six zero, and Zone Plan Development District. G C dash zero seven dash nine two Chad Neal, Regency Innovations Agent for Stephen Cookson Incorporated Owner. All right, Ms. Leaf.
Good evening, Commissioners. Stephanie Leaf, Planning and Zoning Director. So this is a site plan for a new accessory dwelling, or not dwelling, accessory building, excuse me, three thousand square feet. And the existing business is Cookson Roofing, so they're adding this to the rear of the property. They also show a twenty-foot buffer along the rear that was part of their original site plan. And they have a planted type E buffer that's at the front of their property on Martin Palmer that's existing as well. So this is the property here. This is Martin Palmer, and this does back up to residential subdivision, Somersby Point. And you can see the existing building there. So this is their site plan. This is their existing building. They do have a, a couple other accessory buildings back here. This RV shed, as they've noted on the plans, will be removed. And this is a three thousand square foot building they plan to install in the back there. And it is for storage for the existing business. And then here's just, uh, just the elevation of the metal building. And these are your possible motions. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, Commissioners, we got any questions for Ms. Leaf? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Neal, step forward. We're gonna be easy on you, buddy.
All right, it's my first one.
Ain't no problem. Just tell us who you are.
Okay, I'm Chad Neal, and I'm the agent for Mr. Cookson and will be the contractor for this project.
Perfect, perfect. All right, Commissioners, do we have any questions for Mr. Neal?
Please step forward.
You did a good job, Chad. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners?
I'll make the motion.
Wait, 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 we gotta have a public hearing. Yeah, we better have a public hearing on this one. All right, we're gonna open the public hearing portion. Do we have anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Please step forward. All right, hearing none, seeing none. Do we have anyone that would like to step forward in, um, in favor? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we're gonna close the public hearing portion. Okay, now Commissioners, let's discuss. No questions or discussions.
I just have one question. Um, just for clarity, this is supposed to be a standalone building?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
All right, if we don't have anything to discuss, Commissioners, we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve S P dash two five dash ten as presented.
I second the motion.
Okay, I got a first and a second. All in favor? All right, seven zero in favor of S P dash twenty-five dash ten. All right, let's move right along. Uh, one point two, which is S P dash twenty-five dash nine, three ninety-nine Canal Road Site Plan. Consider site plan approval for sixteen-space electric vehicle parking lot with charging stations located off of Sheepway. Property is located at three ninety-nine Canal Road, parcel zero three dash zero three six oh nine, and zoned highway commercial and forest agricultural. Development area is highway agricultural zoning. Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering Agent for Callaway Ventures LLC and Brunswick Canal LLC Owner. All right, Ms. Leaf.
Thank you. This is S P twenty-five nine, and this is on Sheepway, near the intersection of Canal and the Spur. And so they are proposing a sixteen-space electrical vehicle parking lot with charging stations. They have included a traffic study that's in your packet. There have been numerous discussions really over a number of years regarding Sheepway and Canal Road. So they did do a traffic study for this particular application. And they did show that they're anticipating a hundred and fifty trips per day, and a trip is one way. And so that would be how many individual trips is anticipated. They did note that A M P and P M peak periods, so this is, you know, the morning rush hour, evening rush hour, that there were some queuing lengths and turn lane storage space that was noted. So there was an executive summary that was in the traffic study. It was about sixty-seven pages. That was part of your packet. But I'm sure Mr. Franks can, can go into that in more detail if you have any questions about that. And then they do show a ten-foot type E buffer along Canal Road. And here is the, the property. So it is currently one parcel that does actually extend to the north as well. But the charging stations will be on this part, this part of the parcel that's closer to Canal. And then this is their proposed site plan. They do have two, two entrance points coming off of Sheepway, as you can see here. And then here are the charging stations right here, as well as along this side. And then there are buffers down here along Canal. And then here are their proposed elevations for the charging stations. And these are your possible motions. And because of the, the number of discussions we've been having regarding traffic, there's also another proposal for potentially a Texas Roadhouse. That's a long, that's a, that's a long sheep way, kind of further down. You all may have been familiar, or on the commission when the Outback Steakhouse came through as a site plan. And so it's that property that is potentially gonna be a different use with a, you know, greater traffic generator. So what staff is recommending that, as we continue these discussions, there could potentially be changes of the construction plan phase, which is where our engineers typically do do the deeper dive on, on the civil plans and any traffic considerations. So we just add the recommended condition that that would, that that could potentially change at the time of construction plans. So, see, Mr. Franks is here instead of Jake Lemmings this evening for this application. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Uh, question. He said, uh, on the last part about revisions to Sheepway. Is it Sheepway or Canal Road? That would be, require possible?
It could, it could be either. So it really depends on kind of what, what ends up. You know, we've been having discussions with both the neighboring property, as well as Mr. Callaway, the owner of this property, to, to look at potential options and what could be done. So it could be either.
Are there any charging stations in Glen County at the moment?
Yes.
There are, yes.
Yes.
I'm not aware of any standalone like this. Yeah, Walmart.
You talking about standalone, standalone?
Something like this.
No, 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 sir, no, sir.
Yeah, this is the first standalone that I'm aware of here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the Outback was before my time. Which parcel is that on?
Um, it's a little bit off the page, but I'm just to kind of really, as you come up, Sheepway, the Chipotle is the first one on the right, and then Highway fifty-five, which I believe is closed, is this building right here. And the Outback would have been the next parcel.
Okay, not the other, not the other part of this parcel.
Correct, yeah, not the other, it was, yeah, there was an existing parcel here.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, do we have any other questions for Ms. Leaf?
Uh, yes, I do have a, I guess maybe one or two questions. I know you mentioned the steakhouse, the possibility of that coming later on. Um, and I'm just looking at the way that the site plan is designed and the entrance to the charging station, the first entrance, when you make that turn off of Canal Road. Because I know that there's a lot of traffic congestion there now. I go on the Chipotle quite a bit, and it's kind of hard getting back out onto Canal Road. So I was just wondering, are there any possibilities of, um, maybe restructuring that entrance to kind of help with the congestion there? Or has that been considered, or are there any other options as far as the traffic pattern?
Yeah, that's, that's definitely one of the considerations. But currently, the owner of this property, Mr. Callaway, does not have any control over property further down Canal. So because this, this Sheepway is so close to the intersection, that's, that's a big part of the issue we have. And so ideally, you know, moving Sheepway, you know, further down Canal this direction would be, would be a much better and safer scenario. But Mr. Callaway does not own any property down here. This is another property owner. So that is part of the, part of the conversations we've been evaluating and looking at and trying to, to work through is, you know, creating a safer situation, you know, in this whole area. Because this is a very large parcel that, you know, in the future, likely it will be developed at some point. And so we've, you know, been looking at a lot of different issues. But I, but that, that is something that we've, we'd like to, like to have done. But it's, you know, definitely challenging with the different property owners.
And when we approved the Outback, wasn't there some funds that Mr. Callaway are allowed as part of that? And I guess that is still on the table with, does, will the Texas Roadhouse will just have to come back for site plan approval?
Likely they will. I, I think there might have been an extension to their site plan, that they might still be valid for a few more months. But if the Outback is larger or has more parking spaces, you know, likely they will have to come back for a new site plan for that, that building.
That's been, that's been longer than two years, hasn't it?
It has been, and I, I believe they got an extension on, on their site plan.
Wasn't we just told last meeting that if you hadn't started vertical within the two years, that you lost that?
So there was a code change. I think this was last year that we made a code change that we did establish an extension period. And there was, there's kind of a, there's a window, and there's only specific types of plans that, that can kind of fall within that window. But, but yeah, there can be another, another one-year extension can be granted. And that's where I believe there, they're still in that for a few more months, if I recall correctly.
So that one-year extension could be granted by staff?
It's, um, staff can review it, but I think it's the county manager that's the final signature on that.
All right. Does everybody got the questions from Ms. Leaf? I got one that I want to home in on. Please put back the motions. Okay, I got a problem with the bottom half of that, okay? What developer would, in his right mind, would be interested in developing anything with that clause at the bottom of that? That, that's not, that's not fair to Mr. John Callaway. And, um, that, that, that's really all I want to say. That is ridiculous. If the county needs to do something there, they should have already done it. They know that's gonna be developed. They know that area needs work. And to hold that over Mr. Callaway, I, I don't think a developer anywhere in their right mind would build anything with that clause on the bottom of their approval. The county could do anything they want to do.
So I will say.
What am I missing?
Oh, no, you're not missing anything at all. I mean, that, that's definitely what that, that says. Uh, but I will say at, so construction plan would be the next phase after site plan, before they would get their, their building permits for the site. And so at construction plan, that is typically where, I mean, they've submitted their traffic study, you know, ahead of time with the site plan, which, which is great to be able to have that at this stage. But a lot of times, it doesn't come until construction plans if our county engineer will request it. So we don't, we don't get them on every project. It's not requested on every project. But there are some projects where the county engineer and their review determine that they do need to have that in order to evaluate what kind of improvements are necessary there. So there could still potentially be changes at, at the construction plan stage. I mean, honestly, whether this condition is added or not, that could still be something that our county engineers could require and, you know, in conversation and, you know, with our, with their engineers, develop what that plan is.
Well, can I add something? Well, even if, I mean, it gets approved as presented on this, the engineers could still come up during the construction plan review process and say, hey, we think if you just move the first entrance back two car lengths or something, that wouldn't require another comeback through us. Or that's something the engineers could deal with on that, even without that motion.
Yeah, that's, that's an example of what could happen here, too, right?
Gary, I'm concerned about a shakedown like we saw the first time. When he, when he wanted to put, um, uh, Outback Steakhouse down the street, basically the county shook him down and told him, you gonna put up X amount of dollars. Absolutely. I was thinking. I'm not voting for that.
I, I agree. I was just thinking more consideration and engineers, if they just wanted to move the drive back possibly or something. You know, a minor tweak.
Yeah, but if we put that and commit, and, and the county staff, the engineers say, hey, we need Mr. Callaway to give us two million dollars to fix this road correctly before he does that. I, I just, I don't put anything past county engineers. And I, I just, I, I'm, I'm not voting for it. I tell you right now, I'm not voting for it if that bottom is on, period.
We can vote at the top as well.
Sure, absolutely.
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, these are all of your options. This is just a potential motion if that's what you wanted to, to go with.
I'd just like to say one other thing. This is a tough site. It's very linear. It's triangular. And there's a large power line that eats up fifty foot of this lot. And this is actually probably the best solution for putting anything on that is charging station, because you don't have to have a structure up there, and it'll get used right a bit. You can charge your car across the street. Go eat and come back.
Sure, sure. I, I think it's a great idea. I mean, that is the, that's the path that we all going to go down eventually, is we all gonna have electric vehicles, and we gonna have to have filling stations for them. And, and, correct, infrastructure. So, um, I, I think it's a great idea. I just don't think it's a great idea the way Mr. Callaway's done by the county sometimes. All right, that's just my opinion.
All right, I'm, I'm assuming there will be another traffic study done when Texas Roadhouse comes?
That, yeah, that is something that, I'm not sure where they're at with that. And, and just to be clear, too, Texas Roadhouse has not submitted for a site plan yet. So I mean, it could end up being a different business altogether. But that's currently what, you know, what, you know, what we're kind of looking at, but there would be for them as well.
Because something like that would drastically change this, uh, this entrance, I would think.
No doubt. All right, Commissioners, do we have any further questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Leaf.
Thank you.
We got a heavy hitter coming in.
Good evening, Commissioners. Wesley Franks, Robert Civil Engineering. Yeah, I'll gladly provide a little bit of background where we're at right now currently. So Iona is the developer of the charging station here. They're purchasing the property from Dr. Callaway. Like I said, they, they initially submitted a C A B permit, and we kind of coordinated with them to kind of help them through the development process, which allowed them to know that they need to go through site plan. So we helped them develop the site plan. At that point, we knew traffic was kind of a concern. Talked with the county, and luckily, we were able to get our traffic study completed at that time. The traffic study that's been done is specifically for the charging station and what's currently there now. So I'm not the traffic engineer. We subbed that out as part of our scope through Iona. What I look for is at the bottom, recommendations. Their recommendations basically say that there are no improvements warranted for the current plan, as you see on the screen, inclusive of the other developments that are there. So, um, if another developer come, let's say Texas Roadhouse, they would obviously do their own traffic study and whatever improvements were warranted. And at that time, they would be responsible for whatever those were, were to be included. And I'm sure if there were something with Dr. Callaway to share that expense, that's up to them, I guess, to consult. But at this point, what we've produced is compliant with obviously the Glen County site plan requirements. And the traffic study says that currently there aren't any recommendations for improvements needed to support the charging station. It is the intent of Iona to move as fast as they can. Like I said, they had already initially submitted a building permit. As soon as hopefully we receive site plan approval here, here tonight, that will get reinstated. We will then provide construction plans for the infrastructure shown on the screen, which is grading, drainage, stormwater, how we're complying with the ordinances there. So I anticipate that to be as fast as possible. Potentially well before, you know, another application gets presented for any other development on the property. So I'm assuming at that time, they'll address any potential improvements needed to support that development. But at this time, we provided documentation to support that there aren't any, any roadway improvements needed to support the charging station. So happy to any, any, answer any questions. But also want to say I'd like to request it be approved as presented without that condition.
Perfect. Okay, any questions?
Uh, yes, I do have another question, and I want to just go back to the way that the site plan is laid out. I see on both entrances to the charging station, you've got traffic going in, traffic going out. That's at both of them.
That's correct.
Now, the entrance is closer to Canal Road. If you've got traffic going in, going out at that entrance, I can see more of a problem there with the traffic. And I was just wondering, is there a possibility of having those entrances just one way? just wondering, is there a possibility of having those entrances just one way? You know, rather than, you know, so like at that first entrance, maybe that could be the exit only?
Possibly. I, I guess our traffic study that we had done didn't show that there needed to be an adjustment there. I think that's just a queuing, so whenever you've got your peak times, I guess it's up to the, the driver to understand where they need to go in and out, which is why we've got it two-way traffic at this point.
Right. Well, what, what I'm seeing, if you've got maybe a lot of cars that are looking to go in to the charging station at that first entrance, they're gonna stop right there possibly and hold up traffic that's behind them.
Right.
So, rather than having them to go into the charging station at that first entrance, just let them go further down, and that would give more leeway, I think. You know, I don't, I'm not a traffic engineer.
Yeah, I think they've got that ability now, even with two-way. If you get there and it's queued up and they can't turn left, you still have that ability to go to the, the second entrance.
Right, right.
And, and do it like that.
And, and I see that, that is an option. They could go down, but when you think about some drivers that are out on the road, they may not necessarily, you know, look at it that way.
Yeah.
They may stop right at that first entrance, have three or four cars behind them, hold up traffic, and it's gonna be a problem.
Yeah.
But if it's, you know, designed to where they have to go down, you know, to the next entrance, I think that would be better as far as the traffic right at that intersection.
Yeah, and I, I guess you could have it both ways. I guess you could have people coming in who don't, don't know that, that could still stop the queuing even, even with the, the one-way there. So, I would prefer not to limit it to, to just the one-way. Like I said, we've got our traffic study done that just shows that there's no issue, and if there are queuing, you know, we have that ability to use both, in both directions.
And that's, that's fine. I just, I mean, from, from being in that area a lot, and like I said, I go to Chipotle a lot.
Right.
I just see a problem, you know, with traffic getting backed up, turning in.
Yeah, and I can see that. I think what's gonna happen, you're gonna have the, the driver obviously make that decision, whether it's one-way or two-way. Okay, I've got options here. I'm just gonna go to the next, next exit or the next driveway.
Right, okay.
All right, any more questions from Mr. Franks?
Thank you, Wesley. Thanks.
All right, it's time now to have our public hearing portion, and we will open that. And could I get anyone that is in opposition of SP-25-9, 399 Canal Road Site Plan? If anyone in opposition would like to step forward, now is your opportunity. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. We're gonna move on to folks that would like to speak in favor of SP-25-9. All right, hearing none, seeing none. We're gonna close the public hearing portion. Commissioners?
I have one question from Ms. Leaf. So, when he said he did the traffic study, and it didn't incorporate the third restaurant, but that has been approved as a site plan, should that traffic study not have included a restaurant?
Yeah, since the Outback had been approved, it sounds like what they looked at was just what, you know, what was existing on-site, not necessarily what was planned. That's a good question, though.
So, will a traffic study be required when the Roadhouse or whatever it could be goes to be built?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. And so, that would take into account, you know, that, that business plus this.
And they didn't do a traffic study originally on the Roadhouse?
Uh, for Outback, I don't recall there was one done for Outback.
If, if it's my recollection, it was, it was in the talking stage when it was brought to us, and nothing final had ever been done, but absolutely, when that site plan gets approved, they will have to do a, a traffic study for whatever steakhouse goes there.
I thought we approved the site plan.
Outback, uh, site plan was approved.
Yeah, I just, in the future, I sure would hate to be the, the purchaser of a property that had had site plan approval, and then another one slides in real quick as you're getting your construction plans, and their traffic causes you to be at a disadvantage. I would just think it needs to be the full picture if it's been approved.
Yeah.
It's been approved, a, a restaurant which has an extension, just in the future. I think it needs to incorporate that.
Yeah, you're probably right.
Yeah, and I can, I can bring that up to our, our engineers and as well as Commissioner Dawson's, you know, comment about the potential one-way ingress egress, just for them to take that into consideration for both of those points for, for the area.
All right, Commissioners, do we have any other questions? Do we have any discussion amongst ourselves? All right, I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve SP-25-9 as presented.
I'll second that. All right, I got a first and a second, and all in favor. Seven, zero again. We have a seven, zero vote for SP-25-9. Ms. Leaf, are we ready for adjournment?
Yes, sir.
Did we give you something you could work with?
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, so adjourned.